We don't need a quorum. All right, we're here to go over this.
I beat you, didn't I?
Want me to start over? Okay, we're gonna, uh, this is a public hearing tonight for a proposed amendment to the zoning, uh... Zoning ordinance, uh, relative to, uh, an exception for historical structures and their rebuilding after, um, damage, demolition, more than half of what the value of the building is. So, did you all get a copy of the proposed amendment?
I might have to make more.
Uh, they may have them already. I'm not gonna read it to you, 'cause you all know how to read, otherwise you wouldn't be here. So, would somebody like to come up and get the ball rolling? Or, we can all go home and have dinner. Go ahead, and say your name when you come up, please.
Scott Mooney, Acton District Road Commissioner. I mean, I've heard this and heard this. Obviously, there's a flaw in it. I think anything that's been built prior to our new ordinance should have, should be grandfathered, plain and simple.
Well, we got...
I mean, it's, that'd be nice, but I mean, it's definitely a flaw in the ordinance. Something was missed. And that's, I mean, it's, 'cause there's a lot of historical places, there's a lot of places that are close to the road, there's a lot of, it's just, I think this is wasting a lot of people's time, effort. There should be a clause in it. Anything that was built prior to this ordinance that we're, we accepted back in the day, it should be, I mean, 'cause there's a trailer right down, right down the road, that they have to, I mean, she, all she wants to do is put a trailer on, but the trailer's like five feet wider. And, but they have to move it back, potentially, I heard. And it's just, that's foolish, you know, these, I mean, that was because of a fire. This lady's because of someone hit her building that's been there forever. It's just, it's just, I mean, I mean, I just think it's wasting a lot of people's time and...
But this, we're talking about historic buildings versus, you would like to see it go a little bit further?
I would like to see it, that someone has a house that's a little bit too close to the road, that's been there forever in this town, or that, they shouldn't have to, unless they're gonna rip it down and build 50% more of a building, or, you know, whatever. I mean, if it's somewhat compatible to whatever they're gonna be doing, putting back there, it shouldn't, they shouldn't have to go through the new ordinance.
Got you. All right. Thanks. Uh, yes?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to...
You are?
I am Dale Barrows. I am the owner of the Little Red Schoolhouse. I would like to thank Scott Mooney for speaking on behalf of, um, his feelings for, um, the structure. I would think he, as a road commissioner, if there were his issues, he would never have spoken in favor of me, of trying to obtain permission to repair my Little Red Schoolhouse right where it sits. I would like to, at the, at this time, also thank the townspeople, the neighbors that came to support the Little Red Schoolhouse. I've actually owned the property for 35 years, but that Little Red Schoolhouse has been there. I also record from the Acton Shapley Historical Society, it has been there for at least 146 years. They've come to know and love the Little Red Schoolhouse as a landmark, um, for their neighborhood. Although, Chip, and I, I mean you no disrespect, I really do feel it's important to read the two proposals to the amendment that I'm trying to seek to be brought forward to our town meeting. Number one, to see if the town will vote to permit the reconstruction or replacement of the Little Red Schoolhouse at the intersection of Youngs Ridge Road and Buzzell Road, and it literally is right there on the precipice, the corner of those two roads. And other designated historic structures, landmarks in their existing locations by adopting the following amendments to our Acton zoning ordinance. The first one, an exception for historic structures as defined in the ordinance, in which are not within the shore land zone, are exempted from the setback requirements of this article, provided that the use of the structure after reconstruction or replacement is not altered from the use of the structure prior to the reconstruction or replacement. And that is my feelings on my Little Red Schoolhouse. The architecture of the structure is not altered substantially. That is my will, not to change it. The structure is reconstructed or replaced in its original location. Again, this is my request. The second portion of the proposed amendments is for historic structures. Structures designated as historically significant by an act of the town meeting, or structures designated historically significant by the efforts of our Acton Shapley Historical Society, subject to the approval of our Acton Planning Board. And, um, as I mentioned, this all is to do with my Little Red Schoolhouse. I have a, a deep appreciation for historic homes, buildings, barns here in Acton. It's what makes us very, very special. And I truly do hope that we can move forward with these two proposals to bring forward and have them acted upon at our June town meeting. And I would be open to anybody, you, uh, on our planning board, you people out here as townspeople, with any questions you would have for me personally about my Little Red Schoolhouse. I've, as I've said, I've owned it since 1980. I bought it from Jim and Edna Wilson. The Wilsons and the Youngs were neighbors on the ridge there for decades and decades and generations and generations. My deed, it doesn't even talk about the house that I live in. It talks about the Little Red Schoolhouse. And I truly hope, um, that we can muster the support to, uh, get these two proposals changed within our zoning ordinances.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Robin Ham. I'm a neighbor of Mrs. Barrows', and my stepdaughter is the one that ran into the building, but needless to say, that building's been there. She has no attempt to do anything different. All that needs to be done is basically cosmetic stuff on the outside. Few shingles, I mean, not shingles, but clad boards, you know, few, a couple of the floor joists might have to be cut and put back, and just, and basically, all she's asking is, is cosmetic. Yes, called into the building inspector. It might be not safe. It didn't fall down totally. If it fell down totally, we're at, we're doing a different place. If it burnt, we're talking something different. But the building is still standing, basically, in its own place. All it needs to be done is some cosmetic work and put back in the safe, so she can have, basically, the same building she had. She's not asking for making it, tearing it down, making it bigger. It's just, basically, all it is, is cosmetic stuff, so it looks, on the outside, the way it was. And that's all I got to say about it.
I'm not from here. Could I say something? I don't know too much.
Yeah, sure. It's a public hearing. Come on up to the front.
I'm, I'm not from Acton. That's my brother-in-law. My name's Mike McCray. I just moved up here from Illinois, and I don't know this young lady, or this lady here, or anybody, but I'm gonna tell you why I moved up here. Because of the historical buildings, all these older houses that sit here, and that, in Maine, I will say Maine, but this area, I like it. I'd like to have been here instead of Sanford, but I couldn't find anything at the time to move here. But I guess you'd say I'm kinda holding up for her, because I feel it was there, that is historical, if she's not changing it over or anything. I, I believe, you know, she's right, I'm not good at talking here, so you probably see, but, uh, I, I feel with her, because, like I say, that's why I moved up here, because, like, these buildings, these has been here for, I don't know how long. I've been here several times, when Richard was alive and everything, and come up here. So, I'm just giving my input. That's why I like the area, 'cause to me, it's more historical stuff. That's all.
Anyone else? Sure, come on up.
Thank you, Chip.
Short and sweet, right?
No, I had to do it. But I thought it was a good opportunity for others to speak.
Tom Gore, and, uh, I've spoken on this issue before, and I apologize, 'cause I was a little heated when I did. I had about one hour to prepare for what I thought was something very different. But, uh, for your benefit, I do have copies, or a summary, if you will, of my remarks for your consideration later on. Guess the first question you ask is, why should we do this? Okay? And the answer to that, I think, as Sylvia's husband just spoke to, is, when you ride around town, you see a lot of interesting buildings. So let's take a little mind's eye ride up Youngs Ridge Road. What do we see? Lilac Cottage. Stan Twing's old house, Lunkowski family lives there now. Go a little further, the old Young Farm, now Perks is the vets. Fred Machado owned it, Jimmy and Edna Wilson owned it, and it was the Young family before that. Both the house and the shop there are within the zone that's affected by our current zoning ordinance. Go on up the hill, Crawford Homestead, now empty, barn and house, both sides of the road. That one needs some serious renovation before it gets done. I think Hope and Bobby would probably remember that by a different name, okay? But, um, we'll just let that go. Everybody knows, I think, what I'm talking about. Uh, go on up, there's the Horn Farm, the top of the hill. Obviously, the barn is right next to the road, and, um, I'm sure that that would not meet the standard for being able to rehab at this point in time. Down the Sandborne Road, two Winchell families, two Winchell family homes are on the right-hand side of the road, within the affected area. Judy Shane, Nae Brazier, his house, obviously. Hutchins Homestead, on the left-hand side again. Bob Hutchins' old house, I don't know who lives there now, but that's the red cape on the right-hand side that stands sort of in a L shape along, right alongside the road. And then, of course, there's Lester Beal's old homestead down the end of the Sandborne Road on the right-hand side. That's within the 75-foot setback, I'm almost sure. Sam Page Road. Old Garrish Homestead over here, starting out on Old 109, coming back, we're gonna be heading east. The Ethel Williams House, another one. The Wilson Place, down at the corner of the H Road and the Sam Page Road. Five Nation Road, which is right across from, uh, the old Nation Homestead. I don't know who owns that now. There was a gentleman in town who lived there a few years ago, was ex-military, um, but it's on the left-hand side, just before you get to the old, before you get to Nation Road. And then you go up the hill, and there's a number of others on the left-hand side. Okay? Now, we've looked around a little bit at this end of town, but we can go down the Milton Mills Road. We don't really need to, okay? We know what we see down Milton Mills Road, especially as we get towards Milton Mills and we drive along French Street. Problem with these old ha, all that I've mentioned here are old homes. And what happens with old homes is they deteriorate over periods of time. They need to get renovated. Almost any residential structure needs to get renovated, and will get renovated, within the period of a generation to 50 years, because even if they're well-maintained, they become functionally obsolete, okay? They need more insulation. They need the furnace replaced. They need the electrical replaced. They need the copper replaced, which means you're ripping out everything on the inside. The values of these old homes are declining, because they become functionally obsolete. The cost of renovation, for you, Chip, and anybody else who knows anything about construction, knows, that the cost of renovating an old place like this is two to four times what it costs to renovate a new one, because you're matching and mixing against what's there, as opposed to starting clean. Okay? This is a scenario for the total destruction of these homes, because we're telling them now, in our ordinance, that all those homes I just mentioned, okay? When it comes time to renovate them, you're gonna either have to move them, if you can find another place on the property, or tear them down. So the homes and the barns, that we've come to love and identify with our town, are gone. The existing threat, the existing setback requirements, as they exist in the code now, without exceptions to these buildings, threaten the buildings that are our heritage. That's it, plain and simple. There isn't any way about it. That's it. Now, um, well, as I just mentioned, the Crawford Homestead, or what I call Crawford Homestead, and I apologize, Bobby. Um, I'll get into the issue of legal opinion here, just a little bit, 'cause I know you folks have a legal opinion in front of you. Are you interested or not? My take on this.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the legal opinion asserted that the proposed ordinance delegated authority to the Acton Histor, or Acton Shapley Historical Society. Not the case. A clear reading of it, if you read it slowly, you'll see it doesn't delegate that authority. It ultimately delegates the authority to the planning board, and suggests that if the planning board require assistance, or require a recommendation based on historical value, that it seeks the advice of the Acton Historical Society. But if the, if the planning board chooses to deny, and that's perfectly within their realm or option, the person who is making a request to have their structure recognized as historic, has the option of going to the town meeting and requesting that. Okay? And the authority, ultimate authority then rests with the town meeting. Okay? The legal opinion appears to suggest that the town meeting's authority in this matter is not an adequate authority to make a judgment. Well, um, I suppose we can go out of town, experts cost a lot and come from far away. I'm an expert, qualified one, and I know those are the criteria, okay? Then you can find some experts who really know something, and that's a little bit more unusual, but, uh, we won't go there, okay? I would suggest to you, ultimately, that the residents of the town of Acton, the members of the town meeting, are about as capable of identifying structures that are historically significant to the residents of the town of Acton as any other authority we can find. Now, let's talk a little bit about what we mean by historical structure. Does it matter that everybody in this room might have a different opinion of what, what a historical structure is, or, um, is it irrelevant? I would maintain to you it's irrelevant, as long as we can agree in common on those terms, that for us, for one reason or another, either our mama taught there, or I went to school there, or somebody met their wife or husband there, it doesn't matter why we call it, or why we label it historic, okay? In the town meeting, if we can agree that we recognize it as a historic building, that's the only criteria that matters. Hang on just a sec, excuse me. I have to make, I put this in order to get to where I wanted to go. Um, the legal opinion goes on to say that the ordinance lacks historical standards. Well, I would agree that when you create an ordinance, or write regulations that restrict the use of property, the ordinance has to be written in a way that a reasonable person, looking at the standard, can decide whether it applies to them or not, and whether they are restricted in some way from a right they may have assumed that they had. This ordinance does not do that. Okay? This does just the opposite. It grants a right, but it has a high standard to get there. You have to get it through the town meeting. What I'm suggesting to you is that no reasonable person would have an expectation that they can automatically repair or replace an old structure without going through the process, 'cause that's what the process sets forward. It, it provides a pretty steep hurdle. So we're not restricting a right that a reasonable person would assume to have. In fact, we're granting them a right that they have no reasonable expectation of having. As such, the question then says, or the question as, as written in the legal document says, "Well, what happens if this goes to court?" That's what you need standards for. I'm gonna suggest to you that this isn't going to court, and the reason is because the person who feels aggrieved, okay, by having a denial by the town meeting, has no reasonable expectation of having the designation granted automatically. Okay? So you're not depriving somebody of a right. And in fact, what would happen if this were to go to court, okay? First thing that happens when you walk in the door is, the judge, I know, everybody can sue, right? But whether you can get a hearing is something else. And one of the things, one of the most important things that a judge looks at in tort is, does the person have standing? What that means is, does the person who's filing a complaint and asking to come to court, do, have they suffered an injury? Again, the criteria is, would a reasonable person assume, knowing what the rules are, that they've been injured by an act of the town? And I don't think a reasonable person does here. They have no expectation that they're gonna get this automatically. The town meeting can turn them down, or the town meeting can accept it. But when the judge looks at that, and asks himself the question, "Does this person have reasonable justification for feeling injured?", I think the answer is no, and I think the judge, judge offers summary judgment. It's out the door, even before it gets heard. Okay? You understand the argument? All right, with me. Good. So we'll do away with identifiable standards. That's what you need the identifiable standards for. Okay? So the judge can decide, does a person have a reasonable expectation? But we don't need identifiable standards in this. Okay, moving on. To number five on this sheet, the issue of spot zoning arises. No question. This whole process was initiated by an issue located at the intersection of Youngs Ridge Road and the Buzzell Road. That's one spot in town. But I began this with describing to you all the other structures in town that are affected by this ordinance, okay? Or by the restriction that we're imposing here. So, we're talking about this structure because it has brought to our attention a problem, or what I perceive to be a problem, but we're resolving a great deal, a great deal more of a problem than that. All right? Finally, well, I have two other things to say. The above, okay, there's a reference to, in the legal opinion, Title 30A, MRSA 3002, where the attorney points out that, "Well, there's a certain form that this has to be presented in." Why don't you go and look at that title? Okay? The above, the above-referenced statute talks about enactment. It doesn't talk about amending, okay? That we can set aside. You can argue whether this is enacting an ordinance or enacting an amendment, okay? But further on in that provision, and I will read to you, Part 2A of that, states that, "No ordinance of any municipality subject to this subsection may be held invalid due to the municipality's failure to comply with the subsection unless the plaintiff is prejudiced or harmed by that failure." Okay? So, the section doesn't apply in this case. One final question came up in the legal opinion, and that one has to do with suggesting that the town meeting does not have the authority, on the floor of the town meeting, to declare a structure, a historic structure. I, if I need to, will read from you the part of Title 30A, 30001, concerning ordinance power. It's basically the Home Rule rule. And I'm gonna read to you Section 3. "The legislature shall not be held to have implicitly denied any power to grant to municipality under this section unless the municipality's ordinance in question would frustrate the purpose of any state law." When we met with the attorney last week, I asked him, "Reference? Is there some law that this frustrates?" He didn't have an answer, and I notice he's not here tonight, so I don't know if he has one or not, but, um, that's where we're at. Okay? Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, Chip.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, who's next?
Paul Point. I have a few questions, basically technical in nature. In the, um, basically, the second paragraph where it talks about amending Section 1411.3, there's mention of the, the shore land zone, um, and I, and in the, on page two, when you're looking at the 1411.3, it talks about resource protection district within the shore land zone, so obviously, the resource protection district is covered by referencing shore land zone. But in a couple places, it also talks about inshore land district. So is it possible to be in the shore land zone, um, 'cause it says it can't be within the shore land zone. So is it possible to be not within the shore land zone, but also be within a shore land district? And if so, then maybe we want to add inshore land district to the amendments, so that it's clear we're talking about both of those. Otherwise, we're actually sort of putting in a backdoor to the amendment itself, excuse me, to the ordinance itself. Secondly, um, the lovely subordinate clauses in the, the definition of historic structures leaves open to some interpretation whether the approval of the Acton Planning Board is needed for either of the two subordinate clauses. I suspect that we're saying that an act of town meeting does not need approval of the Acton Planning Board, but the second one does. It's not entirely clear that, that that's what it means, um, and I suspect that it would be illegal for the Acton Planning Board to perhaps trump a, an act of the town meeting. But it is what it is. It's not entirely clear the way it's stated. As to the law of unintended consequences, um, I'm assuming we don't have a definition of historic structures now in the ordinance?
I'm not sure.
'Cause otherwise, we'd be amending an existing one? So if we don't have one now, I'm also assuming that we don't actually have any references to historic structures in the zoning ordinance. Can't absolutely swear either way at this moment. But law of unintended consequences, if we don't have a definition, there's been certain assumptions about what we mean by it, and there's some references in there that, that do certain things based on historic structures, and all of a sudden, we have this definition in there, is it going to skew the original intended meaning of references to historic structures in the zoning ordinance? And these are all sort of rhetorical questions. It'd be kinda nice if somebody would, on their own, come up with answers to those before we go to before-town meeting and cement this stuff in. Second bit of unintended consequences for Article M plus one. So, the proposal is to designate the Little Red Schoolhouse as a historic structure. We know why that would be done, but is there any unintended consequences of so doing? Does it change anything else about the structure? I'm not really clear on what the, um, requirements, what the restrictions are for a historic structure. Are there things that you could do with it now that you can't do if you turn it into a historic structure, or vice versa, other than what we're intending here?
I think the ordinance speaks to, the structure would have to stay the same use as it was after, as it was before. So, it was a schoolhouse, it was, it couldn't turn into a restaurant. All right? Uh, it was an empty building. It's been an empty building for a long time, so maybe it has to stay an empty building, I don't know. to stay an empty building. I don't know. But it can't be a restaurant.
Right.
So I'm sorry if that's what you wanted to do.
And on the second page, I'm a little confused about the italicized, bolded stuff in the middle there. It talks about edited as applicable to the Barrow Schoolhouse. I'm assuming that at one point that had some meaning, but at this point, it does not, because there's absolutely no reference to that in Page 1, where, which is really what we're talking about here that's gonna go before town meeting. I'm assuming we're really just, on the second page, we're really looking at the ordinance as it stands and the two proposed changes which are reflected on Page 1.
Right. The proposal that goes to town meeting is this one, what's on this page here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We do speak to historical and archaeological resources. We have a definition for that. And it doesn't necessarily, it's open whether it can be a structure or, well, an old silver mine was a structure.
Well, it's a
And it's a resource, so we do, we do have a definition for historical or archaeological resources. Tom?
There is no definition in the existing ordinance of historical structures. There is the reference that you made and a reference presumably to some things that should have been included or are included in the comprehensive plan. The other answer to one of Paul's questions, I think, Paul, is that the building can never be used for anything except what it has been used for for the past three years. And the reason for that is that the building code requires, okay, that if a building is used, abandoned for three years, okay, you have to start all over again from scratch, and you have to bring it up the code. Well, this isn't coming up the code because we've said you can't do it in the ordinance or in the amendment to the ordinance, okay? So the presumption that it remains as it is, is correct, and nothing else can be done with it. Okay?
Anyone on the board of anything to throw in? Well, that's it. Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll close the public hearing. Our regular meeting starts at 7:00. We do have to decide whether this proposal jibes with the comprehensive plan. That's the last thing we have to do. We don't really give a recommendation, yea or nay, as far as the proposal itself. That's out of our hands. That's the selectmen in the town meeting. So all we would do is say whether it, we think it jibes with the comprehensive plan, which any proposed ordinances need to do to be legal, all right? Thanks for coming, everybody. Yes? Did you have something else?
Yes.
Didn't you want to come up here?
I'm totally unfamiliar with public hearings and so forth and so on, so I'm hoping, Chip, you could kind of like give me, what would, what would you be looking at for like a timeline that you, as, or the planning board looks to make sure it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan? Then you're telling me it goes to the Board of Selectmen?
Well, they would decide whether to put it on the ballot or not. I, if...
How would, how would I know and when would I know if that's, if that's going to happen?
Well, let me say this. We would try to decide whether this jibes with the comprehensive plan as soon as we could, whether we're comfortable doing it on our own, or whether we think we may need help, lawyerly help. And then we would, if we thought it met, that we would tell the selectmen, as far as we know, or as far as we're concerned, it meets whatever issues, it, it jibes with the comprehensive plan, and then they can go ahead and put it on the ballot if they want to.
Okay. Again, how, how would I find out that it, it, whether, whether, excuse me?
Call them up, I guess.
Call the Board of, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Or call the clerk. The clerk, somebody in the town would know.
You mean Jennifer Root, our town clerk? Okay.
So we're not done. Mr. Neal?
I just wanted to make sure. Dick Neal, the, we discussed at the previous meeting about the comprehensive plan. Seeing you brought it up, I just want to make sure that you did have the pertinent sections that address the historical stuff. If you're not, I have a copy for you.
Sections from the comp plan?
Yes.
Or?
No. These are the...
Are those the pertinent issues about the school?
No, the, these are the sections out of the comp plan.
Okay.
Chapter 5, Concerning Cultural Resources, Historic and Archaeological, and also, it's addressed in Chapter 9, on Historic and Archaeological Resources, again. And if you didn't have it, I just want to make sure.
Everybody ought to have a copy of the comp plan, and those were the two sections that deal with
Right.
Historical, and those, that's what we'll be looking at.
Okay.
Ready to have that? Copy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
To answer your question...
And you are?
I am Ted Kryzak, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. By the end of the month, we have to sign the warrant, and everything will be on the warrant then, and then that'll be released to the public, so you'll know before the end of May.
Thank you.
As long, as long as they finish their part of it before then.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, is there anyone else with anything? All right, then, we really are done. Thanks for coming, everybody. Drive home safely. Good night, Cableian.